Call to order.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Tatzias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. O'Hare?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here. Okay, is anybody's, uh, Mr. Lemay, is anybody registered to speak for public appearance?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, school committee communications, um, we have a new school committee member here today, uh, just elected from Dunstable, Massachusetts. His name is Kempton Gigi, and, uh, we're very happy to have you serve on this board. You know, we do a lot of things here, and it's all about the students, and you can tell by this room tonight that, uh, we have, it was very well attended by students as well as their parents, so, welcome, we hope, we're excited to be working with you. Thank you very much. Look forward to it. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, a report of the student representative, please. Stacy.
Organizations and clubs. On May 1st, Skills USA participants competed in the state competition which was held in Marlboro. We had students win both medals and ribbons for their participation and are sending six students to participate in the National Leadership Conference in Kentucky during the month of June. Tiana Diaz and Rachel Rinaldi received first place in Texpo for their Boston Strong Nail Art Design Display. Diane Hong received second place in Texpo for her hand-turned brass clock. Victoria Gibbs and Maria Vicente received third place in Texpo for their wood and granite faux finishing display. Megan Mills with model Fidelia Balchi received the bronze medal in the nail care competition. Manuela Eschevez received the silver medal in medical terminology. Sophomore team of Ryan Wilson and Ryan Laird took the silver medal in additive manufacturing. National leadership participants, Emily Rivera, Daniel Cornealier, Maria Vicente, Victoria Gibbs, Emily Dowd, and Lindsay Stasi. The freshman and sophomore class committee are in the middle of their Pennies for Patients fundraiser. The fundraiser collects donations for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Over the past seventeen years, the program has raised more than $261 million to fund breakthrough therapies and patient services. More than $28 million was raised in 2013 and 2014 alone. A group of students attended the ADL's World of Difference 20th Annual Youth Congress in Boston on April 17th. Here, students learn how to identify different types of prejudice that are still found in schools today. Students took part in a number of leadership workshops that helped them to speak up and speak out against prejudice. Students from the community service club and the sophomore class committee participated in the Merrimack Valley Food Bank's annual spring pantry raid. They assisted with dropping off donation bags in neighborhoods surrounding the school. Donations collected during the pantry raid allowed the pantry to provide low-income families with healthy food options. The senior class is getting excited for their senior week activities. May 29th is the hypnotist and prom video. May 29th, Kennedy Lake in Salem, New Hampshire. June 2nd, field trip to Chunky's Cinema in Nashua, New Hampshire. And June 3rd is field day. Athletics. Nearly 600 athletes came out for spring sports on Monday, March 16th, up about 10% from last spring. These students competed in baseball, softball, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, boys volleyball, tennis, and track and field. Track and field has had another successful season, finishing second place in the CAC for the regular season. The team will be hosting the CAC League meet here at Greater Lowell on May 23rd. Boys volleyball showed solid improvement this spring, finishing the year by winning four of their final six games. Baseball battled hard all season long, suffering several one-run defeats. The team has compiled six wins as of May 18th and will look to finish strong. The softball team has grown tremendously this season, all while featuring a very young roster. The team has captured five wins as of May 18th and will look to add to that total as the season heads towards the finish. The girls lacrosse program continues to improve and is in its third season as a varsity team, has totaled four wins as of May 18th. Boys lacrosse has enjoyed its most successful season in the program's young history. As of May 18th, the team has secured eight wins, needing only one more to, in their final four games to qualify for MIA tourney play for the first time in school history. The tennis team rolled through the season undefeated, compiling a record of 13-0. After securing the regular season CAC crown, the team hosted the league match competition on May 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
Stacy, thank you very much. Uh, I asked you tonight, knowing you're graduating in early June, if you'll be back for the next meeting, and, you know, you've indicated you'll be here even, you know, after you graduate, so, you know, I just want to thank you and let everybody know that, you know, you are a great student representative.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, approval of minutes for the April 16th meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Lemay.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Uh, approval of the warrants, uh, motion to approve expenditures for the sum of $3,812,52.98.
So moved to waive the reading.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, um, a motion, a motion to approve the $3 million? Motion by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, report of the general counsel?
Uh, general counsel will be here for executive session, but, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if we could have a motion to go into executive session regarding deployment of sec, security?
The superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll do the superintendent's report first.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh... As you, as you probably recall, the main meeting's a very special meeting, uh, because we get an opportunity, um, to actually honor, uh, our top ten students. Uh, these ten students that we're gonna honor in a few minutes, um, are the highest, the ten highest-ranking students in a class of almost 500 kids, so, uh, it's quite an honor for them to, uh, you know, quite an achievement, uh, and it's a pleasure for us to be able to honor them tonight. Uh, they were, uh, they did receive awards, scholarship and award night, but because we were honoring 159 students that night, we really didn't get a chance to talk about each student individually, so, this is our opportunity to do that. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna have the students come in, and I'm gonna ask the assistant superintendent principal, Ms. Davis, to come up and, uh, say a little bit about each student.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, parents. I'm very honored and privileged to be here this evening to recognize these top ten students of the class of 2014. Carla Marbelt. Carla Marbelt, daughter of Anna Rodriguez and Juan Marbelt of Lowell, is ranked number 10 in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 103.57. Carla's technical area is medical laboratory and assisting. Her future plan is to study biology with the pre-med pathway at UMass Lowell. Carla is employed through the Cooperative Education Program at Bay State Muscular Skeletal Center. Carla has received the following awards and scholarships. High Honor Roll, Health Occupation Student of America State Conference Silver Medalist. Perfect Attendance, President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Carla has been a member of the following student organizations. Greater Lowell Technical Lacrosse Team, Skills USA, Health Occupation Student of America, National Technical Honor Society, Nurses of the Future. Carla has also participated in community service, including the Bay State Marathon, Food Bank, Alternative House, the Homeless Shelter, Bless the City, Block Party, Greater Lowell Technical High School Student Leadership, Ebenezer Children's Teacher, and Project Purple. Carla states her positive influence is her mother. She helps her and aspires her to do the very best she possibly can. Her mother always encourages her to follow her dreams no matter what obstacles present themselves. The number 10 ranking student of the class of 2015, Carla Marbelt. Deborah Kamau. Deborah Kamau, daughter of John Mugai and Maria Kamau of Lowell, is the number nine ranking student in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 103.72. Deborah's technical area is marketing. Her future plan is to attend Rochester Institute of Technology. Deborah is employed through the Cooperative Education Program at Enterprise Bank. Deborah has received the following awards and scholarships. Fourth place at DECA Districts. Honor Roll all four years. DECA Achievement Award. Perfect Attendance. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Marge Tanner Memorial Scholarship. Deborah has been a member of the following student organizations. DECA, National Technical Honor Society, Senior Committee, and Community Service. Deborah states her positive influences are her mother and father. They taught her how to work hard for the things she wants to accomplish. The number nine ranking student in the class of 2015, Deborah Kamau. Sasha Silver. Sasha Silver is the daughter of Daniel and Ida Silver of Lowell. She is ranked number eight in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 103.94. Sasha's technical area is early childhood education. Her future plan is to study human development at Merrimack College. Sasha has received the following awards and scholarships. Honor Roll all four years. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. Top Ten Award all four years. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Sasha has received special recognition awards in the following subject areas. Early Childhood Education Certificate of Special Recognition. Sasha has been a member of the following student organizations. Drama Club, Newspaper, National Technical Honor Society, and the JV Soccer Team. Sasha states her positive influence is her parents. Watching them work hard every day inspires her so much. They raised two happy children and have succeeded in life. The number eight ranking student in the class of 2015, Sasha Silver. Jennifer Say. Jennifer is the daughter of Lorna Poehl of Lowell and is ranked number seven in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 104.30. Jennifer's technical area is cosmetology. Her future plan is to attend UMass Lowell and hopefully attend medical school. Jennifer has received the following awards and scholarships. Court Doing Good, Honor Roll, President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence, the Top Ten all four years, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Harold Bell Memorial Scholarship, Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Jennifer has received special recognition award in the following subjects. Cosmetology Certificate of Special Recognition. Jennifer has been a member of the following student organizations. National Technical Honor Society and a student mentor. Jennifer states that her mother is her positive influence. Over the years, Jennifer has learned and observed the struggle her mother went through as a minority and a single mother of four. She is truly Jennifer's inspiration and motivation to never settle for less but strive for more. The number seven ranking student in the class of 2015, Jennifer Say. Angela Philavong. Angela Philavong is the daughter of Ket Tong Philavong and Sang Pet Luang Khot. Angela is ranked number six in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 104.39. Angela's technical area is medical laboratory and assisting. Her future plan is to study clinical lab sciences at UMass Lowell. Angela has received the following awards and scholarships. High Honor Roll all four years. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Angela has received special recognition award in the following subject area. Precalculus Certificate of Special Recognition. Angela has been a member of the following student organizations. Community service, in which she has participated in the City of Lights Parade, Bay State Marathon, Lowell Elks Marathon. Greater Lowell co-ed tennis participation, National Technical Honor Society, and Skills USA. Angela states her positive influence is her mother. Her mother is her motivation every day. Her mother encourages her to strive for what makes her happy. She supports her in everything she does and is a strong and determined person. The number six ranking student in the class of 2015, Angela Philavong. Kayla Kohansky. Kayla Kohansky is the daughter of John and Michelle Kohansky of Drakett. She is the number five ranking student in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 105.36. Kayla's technical area is marketing. Her future plan is to study occupational therapy at Springfield College. Kayla is employed through the Cooperative Education Program at Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank. Kayla has received the following awards and scholarships. Top Ten Award all four years. Perfect Attendance. The President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Dumont Family Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. The Richard Boma Memorial Scholarship. The William Burns Memorial Scholarship. And the Marge Tanner Memorial Scholarship. Kayla has received special recognition and outstanding achievement awards in the following subject areas. Marketing Education Certificate of Special Recognition and Outstanding Achievement in U.S. History III. Kayla has been a member of the following student organizations. The volleyball team, captain of the tennis team, DECA, and the National Technical Honor Society. Kayla states her positive influences are her parents. They have always told her to work for everything she wants and to go for her dreams no matter how big they are. The number five ranking student in the class of 2015, Kayla Kohansky. Jocelyn Cox. Jocelyn Cox is the daughter of Patty Ann Spence Cox and Joshua Cox of Lowell. She is the number four ranking student in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 105.78. Jocelyn's technical area is marketing. Her future plan is to study marketing at Fitchburg State University. Jocelyn has received the following awards and scholarship. Fifth place at DECA Districts. Eighth place at DECA States. High Honor Roll all four years. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Cumberland Farms Believe and Achieve Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship, and the Marge Tanner Memorial Scholarship. Jocelyn has also received Outstanding Achievement Award in the following subject area. Marketing Education Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. Jocelyn has been a member of the following student organizations. Tennis team, DECA, Senior Committee, and Community Service. Jocelyn states her positive influences are her mom and Beyonce. They have both worked really hard to get where they are today. The number four ranking student in the class of 2015, Jocelyn Cox. Tamara Faria. Tamara Faria is the daughter of Christiane and Edson Faria of Lowell. She is ranked number three in the class of 2015. Her GPA is 105.83. Tamara's technical area is medical laboratory and assisting. Her future plan is to study nursing at UMass Lowell. Tamara is employed through the Cooperative Education Program at Burlington Podiatry. Tamara has received the following awards and scholarships. Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Certificate. Perfect Attendance. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. Top Ten Ranking Student Award for the past four years. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Tamara has also received Outstanding Achievement Awards in the following subject areas. Algebra III with trig certificate of outstanding achievement. Anatomy and Physiology Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. Medical Laboratory and Assisting Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. Tamara has been a member of the following student organizations. The tennis team, the soccer team, Skills USA, National Technical Honor Society, Health Occupation Student of America, Nurses of the Future, Community Service, and the Peer Leader Program. Tamara states that her parents are her positive influence. They are always motivating her to do her best. The number three ranking student in the class of 2015, Tamara Faria. Lenisa Poehl. Lenisa Poehl is the daughter of Colap Lang of Lowell and is the salutatorian of the class of 2015. Her GPA is 106.96. Lenisa's technical area is cosmetology. Her future plan is to attend Wentworth Institute of Technology. Lenisa has received the following awards and scholarships. Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. MVA Presidential Certificate of Merit. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. Number two ranking student all four years. High Honor Roll. MAVA Outstanding Vocational Student. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Harold Bell Memorial Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship. Lenisa has received special recognition and outstanding achievement awards in the following subject areas. Cosmetology Certificate of Outstanding Achievement and Physics Honors Certificate of Special Recognition. Lenisa has been a member of the following student organizations. Varsity Lacrosse Team, National Technical Honor Society, participant in the advisory board meetings, and Skills USA. Lenisa states that her grandmother, Lon Lang, is her positive influence. Despite her disadvantages, she has an immense amount of energy and no task is too small or too large for her. She is always quick to offer her hand and is a great motivator for Lenisa. Lenisa's grandmother also entered America as a refugee along with the rest of her family. All of her struggles helped her to be where she is today. The number two ranking student in the class of 2015 and the class salutatorian, Lenisa Poehl. The number one, uh, ranking student in the class valedictorian of 2015 was unable to be with us tonight, but I would like to share, uh, a little bit about her. The number one ranking student in the class valedictorian is Kristin Sylvester. Kristin Sylvester is the daughter of April and Paul Sylvester of Drakett. Her GPA is 108.06. Kristin's technical area is design and visual communications. Her future plan is to attend Mass College of Art and Science. Kristin has received the following awards and scholarships. High Honor Roll all four years. Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. President's Award Certificate of Academic Excellence. John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Align Credit Union Scholarship. Greater Lowell Foundation Scholarship, and the Richard Boma Memorial Scholarship. Christian, Kristin has received outstanding achievement awards in the following subject areas. Design and Visual Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. English Four Honor Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. Physics Honors Certificate of Outstanding Achievement, and Precalculus Certificate of Outstanding Achievement. Kristin has been a member of the following student organizations. The National Technical Honor Society. Kristin states her positive influences are just too many to list. She has learned so much from them all. The class valedictorian of 2015 is Kristin Sylvester. Just, just before we close, just before we close, I'd just like to call attention to the parents and the guardians in the audience, and also, I'd like to give them a hand, 'cause without the support of, uh, their families, these students would not be able to achieve what they have achieved. So, thank you, parents, for supporting us. And thank you, students.
He would know he just graduated his time, right? Well, it's not college, it's college, so, so get ready.
Yeah, I'm glad you're graduating. It's a big one, right? It's a big day. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. These george's, uh... Welcome to all side.
Have you signed those ones?
Well, some of them.
Okay.
Yeah, well...
We're going to do it.
No, I think...
Are these enclosures already in this?
Last year we did.
What they're paying?
Yeah, but not, not by... Georges. Not by...
Maybe they'll work harder?
Maybe they'll work harder?
It's pretty tough. What was located on that island, are you a doctor? Hit it.
Yeah, how did that happen?
At Lowell. Not to say the other one didn't.
All the meeting back to order?
Yep.
Okay. Meeting back to order? Thanks, Ray.
Also in my report, section of my report is the monthly Cooperative Education Report. With the seniors, we're tracking about 2% above last year and with the juniors, we're 2% below last year. So, moving in the right direction with the seniors, anyway. Also, in my report this evening, I'm looking for approval for the 2015-16 school calendar, copy of which was included in the packet.
Okay, motion by Mr. Booton to approve the 2015-16 calendar, seconded by Mr. Moran. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Just as a side note, I think you'll find that the calendar, we've added a lot of the events that are happening at the school, such as the spring, winter, and fall sport nights, athletic nights. So, just to make it easier for people to be informed and when things are happening, so you can get them booked earlier on your calendar. So, you can participate. Also requesting out-of-state travel for some of our Skills USA students. They will be going to Louisville, Kentucky, to the national conference this year. There is one, two, three, six students going to form advisor.
Okay, motion for out-of-state travel by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Also, each year, the Department of Education requires the school committee to vote whether or not they're going to allow participation in the school choice program. This school committee in the past has voted school choice for students only after waitlists have been exhausted and there are true openings. However, the exception to that, and because in the most recent past, our waitlist does not get exhausted, so we don't have any openings. But there are situations where students are enrolled here and they may move out of the district but want to continue attending school here because they started here. And that's where we actually use the school choice program for those students that are able to continue here and not have to leave.
Okay, discussion, Mr. O'Hare?
Just one other item. On school choice students, that is only for freshmen and sophomores, not for juniors and seniors, is that correct?
No, it would be for nine through twelves because if, let's say, a student moved out in their senior year, without the school choice program, we'd have to go attend another school after having been here for three years. So, that's sort of the thing that we use it for, to allow those students to stay and finish their career.
All right, but if a student was not a member of the Greater Lowell Student Body and he wanted to become a school choice candidate as probably in his sophomore or junior year, he wouldn't be eligible, would he?
Not from outside the district.
Right, okay.
The other problem would be that they wouldn't have the background in the vocational...
Right, exactly.
It's only a few students that it affects, but it's a really positive thing to do for those students.
Okay, Mr. Booton?
I'll say, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move to approve the school choice by Mr. Tatsias, seconded by Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
And the last two items on my report would be a request executive session at the conclusion of the meeting. One would be for collective bargaining negotiations and the other one would be for deployment of security personnel and devices. So, we'll, you can take those up at the end.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Report of the business manager, Mr. Garabedian?
Yes, good evening. The first item I had in my packet was a discussion on the OPEP, establishing an OPEP trust. It was discussed a little bit last meeting and also mentioned with our auditors that all the districts and cities and towns have been starting to establish these. I was prepared to go further into this after speaking with the superintendent. It's been discussed that it'd be probably better off going to a finance subcommittee before any further action is taken.
Okay, send it to the subcommittee. Motion by Mr. Espinola, seconded by Mr. Booton.
Thank you.
We don't need a roll call for that.
It does say votes.
Good, George.
Okay, second item on the Regional Transportation Reversment Fund. At last month's meeting, I had indicated we would come back with a vote to establish this fund. And again, in talking with the superintendent and the fact that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed are going to be holding a webinar in the next couple of months to go over this fund and identify the benefits and potential risks, we felt it best to hold off until we get more information before we present this back to the committee. FYI.
Okay, what's the date on that webinar, Mr. Garabedian?
It hasn't been established yet. I talked to Jay Sullivan at the Department of Ed and they said they were going to be putting something on within the next couple of months.
Okay, could we sit on that? Could we be associated to that webinar? Is that more of the...
It's kind of like, they usually have it at noon time on a certain day and you dial in and, you know, you can look on from the computer.
Look at conference.
Okay, okay.
I can let you know when and date and time.
Yeah, I think one of us school committee members might be interested in something like that, including myself.
Will do. The last item I have on here is seeking approval to surplus some equipment. In the packet, I've identified a Accutenter paint mixing machine and painting and design, facial steamer in the cosmetology, and various equipment from the old Aramak kitchen that is, a lot of it is outdated and some of it is broke. But seeking our approval, it's all over the school in the hallways. We want to clean it up.
Okay, move to approve by Mr. Espinola, seconded by Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Okay, Mr. Booton?
Mr. Garabedian, I heard the wonderful news for you and just wanted to say you'll be sorely missed. And congratulations.
We're still debating if we're going to approve that or not.
Okay, old business. I think...
Just move right through?
About a year to a year and a half ago, Mr. O'Hare made a motion to get a sign replaced down in downtown Lowell that said "Welcome to Lowell." It was there for a long time. It was a beautiful entrance into the downtown. And after a period of time, we have a new sign right here, made by our graphics department. And which other departments, Mr. Brugesois?
So, Painting and Design, Carpentry. I think Metal Fab was involved in the train tracks. And I think Graphic Arts was involved as well. So, it was a collaborative effort on the part of five, four different shops.
And I want to thank Mr. O'Hare for presenting that motion after seeing that sign gone. So, if you'd like to go ahead and say anything on this beautiful piece of art that's going downtown Lowell.
Well, a few years ago, the same request came up that we... Wouldn't it be nice if we had a "Welcome to Lowell" sign at the Central Middlesex Gorham Street intersection, of which we placed. And it remained there for a period of time, while identifying the city and a lot of positive comments. The, there is some various degrees of explanation of what happened to the sign, which we do not know. It could have been damaged in an accident or misplaced by somebody who was looking for it more than we were. But I think not only is this going to service exactly what it did before, but where the University, Middlesex Community College, is in charge of the old depot or the old Weylto building, as some people know, that'll be an entrance, that's going to be another entranceway into the city of Lowell. And this sign will be, this sign will be there to greet the people that were coming into the city. So, it was very impressive. People missed it and they're going to be very happy seeing this again. We'll try to do it a little more secure and maybe with some of the vendors downtown can utilize some of their, the cameras that they have in their buildings to identify if anything's going to happen.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. O'Hare, Mr. Lemay.
Yeah, to George. George, was this previously located at the island?
Yes, it was.
Was it that size?
Yes.
It was?
Yes.
So, is this like a replica of what?
It is.
I forget what it...
It is pretty close to the exact same sign as we had before.
It came out beautiful.
Yes, it did.
Great, great job.
Very nice.
It really shows off what our students can do here to really enhance our cities and enhance what the school does as well.
What is the next course of action? Are we going to alert a certain department within the city?
Yeah, we're going to... I've already talked to people in the past. I haven't talked to them in the past month, but we'll just coordinate with...
Can you let your colleagues know when that's going to?
Yes, yes, yes.
You should have a little dedication for that.
Yep.
Great idea, Mr. Lemay.
Well, I haven't, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Tatsias. And I think, I don't know, well, there's not a plaque on it, but I think we should sign anything that comes out of this school. And probably on the back of the sign, you know, done by the students, constructed by the students at Greater Lowell Technical High School. I'll tell you where one of those signed items a few years ago, the statue of Wanal Lancer, who was the Indian chief, who was in charge of all the Native Americans, as we say today, all over this area, there is a big, there is a big statue, copper statue at the Edson Cemetery. And that is, that was rehabbed or maybe five years ago and has a signature plaque on it also, made by the students at Greater Lowell Technical High School. And I think it's, I think it's a big advantage as people in the community can actually see some of the things that students do at this school. What did I say? Oh, Wanal Lancer ended up...
There's a, there's another project that, I don't know if you've had a chance to go down and visit with it, but if you do get a chance, the Metal Fab students over the last two years have created a Riverhawk. It's going to be placed. It's really impressive. It's out of stainless steel. It's going to be placed in one of the UMass Lowell buildings. I don't, I think they've talked about a couple of locations. I don't know if they've actually identified exactly where yet. But that'll be getting located either before we leave this year or at the beginning of next year. It's all put together. It's all ready to go. They even have the piece that goes in the ground four feet that gets buried, that it gets mounted to. But it is a very, very, very impressive piece of craftsmanship, as is this sign. So, if you get a chance to stop down there sometime, it's absolutely beautiful.
Mr. O'Hare?
Gentlemen, I just want to say one thing. I slipped on something I said talking about the Wanal Lancer Indians, but the statue is of Chief Pasa Conway. So, I don't want you to think it was Chief Wanal Lancer. It was Chief Pasa Conway.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Mr. O'Hare.
Thank you.
Not sure that I caught it, but thank you very much.
You don't have to because it's corrected now, Mr. Bahu. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, new business. Mr. Booton?
I have three items. I just wanted to thank the school committee for the flowers they sent for my mother's wake. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. I had a question for the superintendent. Were any sports teams delayed because of the weather? And has everything been caught up? They haven't had much rain, so...
No, we've been very lucky with the rain. So, my understanding is that the majority of teams were probably delayed one week. And I think the league's schedules were adjusted to add a week on the other end. And fortunately, we haven't had a lot of rain. So, it's, mostly the teams are wrapping up. They're in their last few games. If the tennis teams all finished undefeated. So, it ended up that even though we had a horrible winter and they did get delayed, generally, you get quite a few rainouts and we've been fortunate from that perspective.
Great. The last item I have is, just to let everybody know, as many of you know, I'm the president of a youth baseball softball league. And I did ask the school to make some signs for me under the new program that we have. And my league will be paying for them, we're nonprofit. But I did want to disclose that at a meeting, so...
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Booton. Okay, there's no committeeman motions this evening. So, we'll go right to the report of subcommittees. Approval of April 13, April 13, 2015 Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Approved Domestic Violence Leave Policy. Okay, first we'll move, I guess first we'll approve the report. Motion by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Approved to domestic, approved Domestic Violence Leave Policy. Motion by Mr. Espinola, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Approval of April 16, Greater Lowell Technical High School Building Committee Report. Moved by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Approval of April 16, Greater Lowell Technical High School Building Committee Report. Moved by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Approval of the...
We have to do change orders?
Change, yeah, that's correct. Approval of the change order request in the amount of $148,000, for student mall conference rooms, as well as $77,018.89 for a new office for adult ed and LPN programs. So moved by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Just one question.
Sure.
The school conference room, the school students' conference room, that's, it's more than just school students.
The project that you're approving is the fitting out of the, we built a swing space classroom next to the discipline office. It's going to take the place of the three conference rooms that are up in guidance right now. So, they've already done it, they've already done the preliminary work and we're using it as a classroom. But then, at the end of the year, they're going to split that in half for two conference rooms and they're going to add another small one next to it. That's what this money is for, is to finish it.
Yep.
Finish it up. But that will be the conference rooms when people come in from the outside for parental meetings, those types of things. They will go to the security booth, they will sit there. Somebody will come down, get them, and they're bringing them across the mall to the, to the meeting. They won't have to go up to the third floor anymore.
Was there some discussion of putting them where the Aramok offices were? No?
It was.
We talked about it and then we changed the plans.
This ended up being the preferred.
Right.
Yeah, that was discussed.
Anyone else, Mr. Espinola?
I think it should be noted, just in case it isn't clear at home, that this is money coming from the building project, the school building project that is currently underway so that people are aware that it's just a forthcoming thing that approvals every month of money to pay the bills for the renovation project.
Okay, I think that's a good choice by informing the public. Thank you, Mr. Espinola. Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Motion to approve change order number nine for $201,326. Motion by Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Espinola.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. I have three motions here to go into executive session. Go ahead, Mr. Booton.
A motion to go into executive session regarding deployment of security personnel or devices,
seconded by Mr. Tatzias.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session regarding pending litigation regarding one man, one vote, with a possible vote later.
Okay, motion by Mr. Booton, second by Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Third motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining negotiations with a possible vote after.
Motion by Mr. Booton, second by Mr. Moran, roll call.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.